We have a quorum of the Planning Commission and we're still waiting on one member from the City Council. Thank you all for coming. I'm going to momentarily call us, the Planning Commission into session. Just as an FYI to you all, if you were looking for the packet material, the link to the Planning Commission, the agenda is not working. So if you thought there was no material, it is there, but you have to go to the link to the City Council agenda. So, if you'd like to Google that real quick and find it, it's a pretty lengthy packet, so you can play along at home. At this time, I'll call the Planning Commission into work session.
And she's coming down the hall. Oh, okay.
Also, Planning Commissioners, we don't each have a mic this evening. In order to be heard, we are Facebook live-ing this, please speak into the microphone.
Good evening, I call City Council into session.
Would you like to introduce our guests?
Maybe staff could?
Okay. Alex, please. I still think there may be some people that are now interested that weren't in the past, and if we could, Alex, please introduce our guests and kind of run us through the format for this evening.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Form-Based Code Joint City Council Planning Commission meeting. Over the past couple of years, we've been working with Form-Based Code Institute, now as Smart Growth America, and to put together a Form-Based Code regulatory document for the implementation of the SIA plan. As some of you may remember, SIA plan was adopted by the City Council, I believe, in 2014, and Council gave staff a mandate to follow up in developing a Form-Based Code to implement the land use component of that particular plan. So the city did the RFP, and we hired a Form-Based Code Institute back then, and later on they merged with Smart Code, I mean Smart Growth America. And today, they are presenting the draft of the Form-Based Code that's been prepared to implement the SIA plan. And following the presentation, there will be next steps, and then there will be follow-up meetings after that. A copy of some of the community engagement process and the open house scheduled for September 4th and 5th. The flyer is lying around somewhere at the table behind you, and somewhere on the City Council desk. And with that, I'm going to introduce our guest speakers tonight. I may not, I don't have a list of your names and the profiles, you know. We have, okay, we have Marta Goldsmith, right?
Right.
Okay, Marta heads up the team, and then she will introduce the rest of her colleagues.
Thank you. I guess if I stand over here, I can see the Planning Commission. So, my name is Marta Goldsmith. As Alex said, I am the Executive Director of the Form-Based Codes Institute at Smart Growth America. Smart Growth America is a national organization that helps communities improve their land use practices and urban form using smart growth principles of mixed-use, walkable, equitable development. The Form-Based Codes Institute, which is now part of Smart Growth America, we weren't when we started this project. We are, our mission is to help communities and professional planners and civic leaders understand Form-Based Codes and promote, we promote them because we think that they are the best way to achieve smart growth principles and good urban form in urban areas. I have with me tonight our key team of people who've been working with you now for over two and a half years, I believe, or almost two years, I guess. Almost two years, it'll be two years in September that we kicked off the project. We signed the contract two years ago, July. And I have with me Marina Corey. Marina is a principal at DPZ, Urban Design Architecture and Town Planning Firm, and Anita Morrison. Anita is a co-founder and principal of Partners for Economic Solutions. Marina leads a team of people who have actually written a draft Form-Based Code for Charlottesville, as well as many, many other places around the world. And Anita has done all of the housing needs assessment and economic analysis for affordable housing for the proposed options for the code. And each of them will be presenting that part of the project tonight. So I'm going to ask, please, I don't know everyone sitting at the table here, some of your faces are familiar and some of them are new. So these council members over here have name tags, but have name cards, but if you don't mind, I'm going to ask Lisa for you to just introduce yourselves quickly so that I know who everybody is.
Yes, I'm Lisa Green.
Lyle Soli Yates.
Rory Stolzenberg.
Jody LaHendro.
Jose Mitchell.
Ryan Richardson.
Nice to meet you. Just having an encounter.
Kathy Galvin.
Heather Hill.
Nakia Walker.
Well, thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you all, I see some very familiar faces in the back, but also some new ones. So, thank you all for being here, and we'll go right into our presentation now. Welcome, we've taken care of that. I think it's helpful, even for those of us who've been at this process since the beginning, to recap the work that we've done with you over the last two years, almost. As we mentioned, we kicked off the project by holding a charrette at the ICS property in September of 2017, and we recognized then, and recognize even more now, that that was an incredibly difficult time for the city, and that that certainly factored into the work that we did there. In some ways, it made it more difficult, but I think in a lot of ways, it also made it more important, and it shaped our work going forward. In October of that year, we held a work session very similar to this. We thought it was important to give you feedback as soon as possible on what we heard during the charrette, what we learned, and what we thought you ought to know as we went forward in the project. In December of 2017, we submitted the first draft of the Form-Based Code for the Phase One of the SIA, and got feedback from the staff. And then in March of 2018, we submitted the second draft. Also, in that period of time, we added to this project, it wasn't originally in the project, but we added a citywide needs assessment for affordable housing units, and Anita will talk about that tonight. And we also added a financial or an economic analysis of the number of affordable units that would be generated by private, provided by private developers with the various bonus options, density bonus or height bonus options that we had suggested. And we'll be talking a little bit about that tonight. We also met with the City Council in June in the chambers, and Anita presented her findings on both of those studies. And then in September, we held a series, working with a different facilitator, we held a series of meetings in the Sixth Street project, and also, I know, and we did it at Friendship Courts, and then...
Crescent Hall.
Crescent Hall. We held sessions there so that the residents of those three developments could meet with us, hear what we had learned, and hear what we were proposing in terms of a Form-Based Code, since it was their neighborhood. They also had participated in the charrette, but we wanted to go to their communities in their meeting halls to have a dialogue, both about the code and the housing assessment that we did. And then we subsequently met with a team from the Friendship Court leadership, who had done a site plan for the redevelopment of Friendship Court, and we, it was a very intensive and very technical work session where we looked at their site plan, and we looked at what we were proposing for the code, to see if there were conflicts, and if there were, how we could work those out. And those will go into the next version of our code. And then we, back in April, we met with the CRHA and the FAR, sorry for the misspelling, the FAR boards, to talk again about the code and the housing needs assessment. And the presentation that we did for them is very similar to the one we'll be doing today. So, where do we go from here? Well, today, we're having another work session with you to update you on the progress we've made, the product we've developed, and to get your feedback on that. As Alex mentioned, on September 4th and 5th, we will be holding what we're calling stakeholder open houses. We still need to sort of decide what's going to be the best format for that, but the purpose of those two meetings is to invite everyone who is affected by the proposed code, including other residents of the housing communities, but also other single-family residents, multifamily residents, people who live adjacent to the site, businesses, and anyone else in the city who would like to come, property owners who would like to come and hear what it is we're proposing and give us some feedback. And then based on all of that, all of the meetings that we've had since we submitted the draft second code, the second draft of the code, we will put together a list of proposed changes, based on everything we heard, and submit it to NDS for their guidance on which things we should include in our final draft. And that then will be delivered in October to NDS. So that's what we've done to date, and that's what we have between now and probably the end of October. Do you have a question, Lisa?
Yes, you've got this down for the 4th and 5th of September. Do you have, has this been posted? Has this been advertised? Do we know where the meetings are going to be and what time?
My understanding is yes, but I defer to Alex to answer that question.
Yeah. The meeting will be at...
Alex, could I get you to speak in a microphone so people can hear you as well? Thank you.
On Wednesday, September 4th, the open house will be at Thomas Jefferson MPO located at 401 East Water Street. And on Thursday, September 5th, we're going to have another open house, right here. The open house starts by 6:00 PM and closes at 8:00 PM. Both open houses on September 4th and the 5th. We start at 6:00 PM and close at 8:00 PM. On September 5th, it's going to be right here in the city space, and then on the 4th, again, it's going to be at Thomas Jefferson PDC on 401 East Water Street.
Thank you. Sorry.
So, moving forward, let's see, oops, I'm going backwards. I don't want to go there. So what are our objectives for today? As I said, we want to explore the key elements of the draft Form-Based Code, increase the Council and the Commission's understanding of the affordable housing options that are proposed in the code, as well as the needs assessment study that we did. Here are the concerns from all of you, answer questions, and as we've done, and we will do again at the end, outline next steps in the process. So unless there are any other questions about anything I've said so far, I'm going to turn it over to Marina, who's going to walk you through the elements of the code, the Form-Based Code as they currently exist.
I thought you were joining this call, but maybe not. I'm happy to do it if you want to.
Okay.
Since I've already introduced... Okay. So, we responded to this RFP to write a Form-Based Code, and we arrived here to do the charrette, and for obvious, understandable reasons, got derailed talking about affordable housing at the charrette back in September of 2017. And we spent a lot of time trying to explain what Form-Based Codes were, but there were more important topics that needed to be discussed. So, we took a step back, really spent some time trying to understand the affordable housing components, but then came back and did write a Form-Based Code for the SIA, since there was a directive to do that, and trying to educate people on what is a Form-Based Code, why are they implemented, and why it makes sense for the area. And there was a very specific sort of physical vision, or an implication of a physical vision described for the area. And a Form-Based Code is an easier way to try and get to that vision. It creates a predictable framework through the zoning by coding form instead of coding use. Use is still part of that, but it's a secondary concern. And for property owners who are told that they have to behave, their buildings have to behave in a more stringent way, the hope is that the process at the end is simplified for them in some respects, to make it a sort of a win-win. The community gets what they want because they're used to coming out and talking about the three or four key issues in the SIA that we know are trigger issues, whether it's the need for affordable housing, how to create appropriate transitions, and to make sure that the heights are accurately placed on the site. And the property owners, you know, we've had property owners tell us, not only the affordable housing ones, but also private property owners, make the process more predictable for us, and we will be willing to be held to a higher standard. And I think that's something important to keep in mind. Why the strategic investment area, Form-Based Codes are often, you know, some cities do it wholesale, they'll adopt a Form-Based Code comprehensively, others do it piecemeal and start piecemeal, and there's no right or wrong way. Charlottesville decided to try it out on this area, and because there's some significant, predominantly empty land, it's a good test case for this site. So, how does it differ from conventional zoning? There are four common factors in a Form-Based Code. The first one is a regulating plan, and I'll show you what that is. It's not only zoning, but there are additional regulations that are attached to the plan that starts to dictate where streets should connect, where retail should be located, and start to create a more predictable framework. It takes building types, and tries to encourage a greater variety of building types, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a sec. Speaks to open space as well. We're used to seeing open space requirements in terms of a percentage, as opposed to a form and characteristics that make open spaces what they are supposed to be. And then the design and function of streets is very important, because we really think about the space between the buildings as much as what the buildings themselves look like. And it's not that land use isn't regulated, it's absolutely regulated, it's just secondary to the form. We heard a lot about what the city needed and what the aspirations of the community were in terms of what the Form-Based Code can do for them. And so we created this chart to be very upfront and transparent about what a Form-Based Code can do and what it cannot do. So, can it increase the number of affordable units? We think it can. For the community, like, what can it do for the community? We think it can help preserve existing affordable units, give you access to more open space, and certainly more beautiful open space. More inclusive housing, create the opportunity to provide a greater type, a greater mix of business types. It can definitely create safe and comfortable places and improve the building form. It won't provide you with better schools, it won't provide you with the affordable housing component Anita will speak to, but it doesn't in and of itself create more affordable housing, and it obviously doesn't create an access to jobs, or greater access to jobs. For the property owners, what can it do? The idea was to retain that baseline capacity. Virginia is a state in which you, property rights are taken seriously, so you don't want to downzone. We've written codes in cities where the Council has been very upfront about downzoning tremendously across the city, it hasn't been a problem, in other places it is. So the idea was, how can you retain the baseline, but give them bonuses by which they can then provide affordable housing? Definitely make the regulation simpler, streamline the project review process, try to reduce parking requirements where it makes sense, leverage public and private investment, streamline the review process as well, improve the building form. Waving fees for affordable housing units is something that the code can't do, but we can put that on the table. So the potential benefits of Form-Based Codes, and there's a lot of literature now on it, from a fiscal standpoint, from a health standpoint, from a social standpoint, what they can do. Yes, it makes the environment easier to walk and bike and use transit, and this, the SIA is, you know, within striking distance of your downtown and your main street here. So it's a very important site. It certainly sets standards for community scale and character, it attempts to integrate uses at a finer grain level, offers more cohesive design and development because it controls the form. We think the rules have been written to be more straightforward and easier to interpret and understand. And it takes what we have heard the community tell us they want, in terms of the scale and the character of the place, and translates it back to you in a language that hopefully you understand, with some physical diagrams that can help it as well. The potential limitations, and we hear this everywhere we go, sometimes the community is afraid of streamlining the review process too much because they think that their discretionary review is taken away from them. Once they understand that a lot of what they tend to ask for in a code is inherently built into the code, anxieties tend to be relieved. But of course, that will, the actual streamlining of the review process and what triggers, what the triggers are for a developer who wants to stray from these, haven't been figured out yet. Right now, the processes you have are still on the table. It won't obviously solve every local issue, it's not an affordable housing policy. Density bonuses, the way they're currently structured, and I'll speak to that too, are not enough to meet the community's needs, we know that. And then we, obviously, we have to take care that we're not in violation of any state laws or the zoning limitations of Virginia. So what are the basic framework elements in a zoning code? Our understanding of the project was as follows. We wanted to guide the evolution and further the goals of the SIA. The SIA in and of itself is a very big document, but it had some very worthwhile goals. We did hear at the charrette, and subsequently, that it wasn't, it didn't involve enough residents, some people felt it hadn't reached out to enough affordable housing residents, I should say, or community, a wider range of community residents, but it's not to say that those issues aren't being addressed now, and it's not to say that the other goals in the SIA aren't worthwhile, because they are. The Residents' Bill of Rights, your Residents' Bill of Rights is a very important document, it should give people a lot of assurances. It's something that I've now used and shown many communities around the country as, look, Charlottesville has this, and I haven't seen any other community that has this. And so it's a really nice document, and it's one that you've, that City Council, I know, has vowed to respect and retain, and it should give residents a great level of comfort, and it supports your housing policies. The intent of the FPC is also to enable a greater range of housing, and locally oriented businesses as well. And what I mean by that is, there's generally a scale missing, I'll talk to that in the code a little bit, which we're trying to address here. The idea of creating a healthy neighborhood by making it more walkable and a better pedestrian environment where people can linger and want to be, and to promote smaller-scale increment of development as well. So this is what your existing zoning looks like, it's predominantly DE or downtown extended, and that's the zoning category that we really, really focused in on, to try and understand, all right, what does it currently allow, and how could it change? Generally speaking, your development by right is as follows. You can do housing by right, and that's 43 units an acre. Now, what's strange about that is that that's three stories, and 43 units an acre is, at three stories is a lot, right? And there's also a 35-foot maximum. You can do by right commercial at 50 feet maximum. What that does unintentionally or intentionally, we don't know, is that it creates a condition under which it's more productive to develop commercial, because you can get an extra story. So, right there, there's a disincentive to provide housing. So we wanted to do away with that and level it, and say, why should you get more capacity if you want to do, if you want to do a commercial building? Keep the capacity the same to encourage more residential. And then you have a by right mixed use, which is still established, at this point, it becomes problematic, because it's still 43 units an acre, but now you can go nine stories by just providing 25 percent commercial. But of course, at 43 units an acre, nine stories, that just, nobody's ever going to build nine stories, because that's one unit per floor, basically. It's two stories of units, and then 43 units an acre. Nine stories, you can probably get over 100 units an acre. So the density is not calibrated to the height of the building, and that's a perfect example of, when there's, conventional codes tend to use numbers instead of form, and they don't necessarily align. So we wanted to illustrate the problems with the existing situation right now, as we understood it. Then we did a new zoning plan proposal, which was to say, it shouldn't be sort of one color everywhere, it should be predominantly one color, and that's basically what's allowed in here. But there should be, along Sixth Street, there should be a recognition that there's single-family housing across the street, and it should be slightly of a lower scale. And then there should be an important civic space in this area. And we proposed it on the ICS property, because frankly, and the ICS property owners here, and they were willing to do it. But then we said, where should nine stories be? And nine stories should be around an open space, whether it's here, or whether the open space is designated elsewhere through the community engagement. We think whoever's going to provide that open space should be rewarded by being allowed to do taller buildings. Now, in the many public meetings we've had, nobody's ever objected to the open space being there, which seems, which is interesting. We haven't heard anybody say, try locate it elsewhere. We did suggest another open space, but that's on the Friendship Court site, because they already have one, and it seemed to also make sense. But then we have a proposed regulating plan, which is that extra level of detail that comes in, that really tries to control where streets need to connect, so those are the arrows, the black arrows you see, to make sure that the blocks, that you have at least as porous a block network as you can have. Where should retail be required, and where should retail be suggested? Where should streets connect, and where can streets be pedestrian streets? And so, for example, on the Friendship Court site, even though you see this diagram with the green in the middle and then a cross of streets, the development of their plan, as they worked it out with their community, doesn't quite follow this, but it doesn't follow the trajectory of the streets, but the intention meets this regulating plan. So the idea of this regulating plan is to say, where it says the streets have to connect, they do, but the streets can take any trajectory they need to. So it gives property owners the flexibility to be able to adapt as they need. So one of the things, obviously, one of the most important elements of a Form-Based Coding is height and bulk. So, we've created three zoning categories, and they're based on what's called a transect, which is different degrees of urbanity, from less rural to more rural. The T4, which is the lightest color, is what we call, would be three or four stories maximum. It's going to be four stories, it was proposed at three, but you'll see in subsequent presentations, we have it at four. T5 is proposed to be, and that's the majority of the site, at five stories, six stories, sorry. And then the T6 is the darkest color, is proposed to be at nine stories. Now, keeping in mind that the existing code said you could do three, four, or nine, right, depending on what use you put in, it was a hard balance, and with Anita's help, we tried to make sure we figured out what the right sort of by right height would be, and what the bonus heights should be. And we have a proposition for you, for you to look at. We've also identified what we call A and B streets. And A streets are basically streets that are held to the highest pedestrian level. They should be of a good quality, which means you want to control that you don't have curb cuts there. For example, some of the site, whether it's in Friendship Courts or on the ICS property, you want to make sure, insofar as you can, that curb cuts face each other, parking access face each other. There should be some streets that are really prioritized pedestrian, and some streets that prioritize cars a little more. And when you have the ability to do a detailed regulating plan, you can control that much more, so that you know that there are some streets that kids could walk on that would be safe the entire way around, without having to worry about curb cuts. So, T4 is called the transition zone. What you see, the diagram you see on the left is the notional idea of what that can be, is predominantly low to moderate intensity, single and multifamily residential, with very limited neighborhood-scale commercial uses. very limited neighborhood scale commercial uses. And we had proposed three or four stories, but it's now up to four, principally because of what Friendship Court is doing on their site. So that's what T4 is. And as you can see, there's not a lot of it, and it's really the depth of one building type before you move to a higher intensity zoning. We have, it's sort of a one-page here that we've put, here are the setbacks, here is the height, here's a lot coverage that you're permitted. It doesn't stray that much from what you had before. And then the use table, you should recognize it, because it follows your, the same uses that you have. We didn't want to reinvent your uses, because we're not redoing your entire code, so we worked hard to work with the use standards that you have currently. And the photos you see, again, is the intended character of the area. And here's one other image of what that could look like. It's principally attached townhouses or what we call two-over-twos or stacked townhouses. T5 is the general zone. It's medium-intensity mixed-use zoning characterized by a mid-rise residential, commercial, or mixed-use buildings. That's the majority of your site. And we were debating whether it should be four stories by right and two stories as bonus, or three stories by right and three stories by bonus. We'll be guided by what City Council and the community end up telling us. Anita's done her analysis based on the three plus three. And again, this is what it looks like. Here are your standards again, the use table. You see many more uses now are allowed. And the form, you can see, it becomes more intense. It can go up to six stories, and it starts to feel quite urban, but in keeping with the character that you have here. And there's another example of one. And then the T6 is what we call the center zone. That's the tallest category that can go up to either, not to nine stories, and it's either five by right and four bonus, or three by right and six bonus.
Can I ask you a question, just so I don't get lost here?
Sure.
So back a few slides, you mentioned that because of Friendship Court development had driven the increase to the four stories. But we could write into this that it remains the three stories and that the bonus, okay.
In fact, that's how we had proposed it initially. It was three stories plus one of affordable housing.
Okay.
But somehow it got changed in our discussions with them. But yeah, it's all open.
Okay.
And again, the standards on one page, easy to understand, easy to interpret, with the uses attached to it. And you see photos of what it can look like. And again, it's style agnostics. We wanted to throw in some modern housing to show that as long as the building behaves as if it's a street, it doesn't have to be a traditional building form. And the zoning code is not intended to encourage that. But here's the general character. You have three characters assigned to the site, the low-density, predominantly residential, and then sort of medium-rise, mixed-use, and then the higher-density, mixed-use. The second element are the building types. And the building types, and we see this in your city, we see this in many cities too, is that there's a, what we call the missing middle. There's development of single-family attached and detached housing, and then it immediately jumps up to six and plus-story buildings. And that's, we see that around the country. The reason it's happening is for a lot of reasons. The way financing is given, but also because of the way zoning codes are written, right? And so when you allow nine stories or three stories, that's sort of what you get. So we wanted to introduce that middle range. And in our discussions with the community, you know, this is supposed to, the 22 units an acre is supposed to be, supposed to be revealed, because we show the building on the left, and then we show the buildings on the right. The townhouses on the right, the high-rise on the left, and we say they both yield the same density. So we were trying to get the community to not think about density, but think about the character and the form of the buildings you want, because number one, people can relate to that better. Instead of saying, we want 50 units an acre or 60 units an acre, which may or may not be right-sized for the kinds of buildings you want, it's better to think about, well, do we want predominantly townhouses? Do we want predominantly four- and five-mix-use buildings, four- and five-story mixed-use buildings? We want nine-story buildings? Where should the nine-story buildings be? And to start having a discussion that way for the general public is an easier thing to describe and to understand. And this is an important slide to tell people, just think about the character. Don't think about density, but think about, how does the building meet the street? Is it pedestrian-friendly? Is it providing active uses at the street level? Those things we think are more important than density. Of course, density is important, because it's how you calculate your level of service. It's how you're going to assign affordable housing, but it shouldn't be the main metric that drives this. And so there's this, what we call the missing middle housing, which is trying to encourage that range of four-to-five-story, three-to-four-to-five-story buildings that is missing. And that, those are the small walk-up apartments, those are the courtyard apartments, those are the bungalow courts, those are the townhouses, the multiplex, everything that doesn't necessarily require an elevator, and that are the triplexes and fourplexes that can be built affordably, and that don't require underground parking, they don't require structured parking, and on a standard residential lot, you can do a walk-up. And on top of that, it mimics a single-family house, and it's a way in which to get very gentle density into a neighborhood without changing its character too much. So we drew a variety of different building types at the charrette and tried to illustrate, these are the kinds of buildings you would want to see. And to try to tell the community, ask yourselves, do you want more townhouses, less townhouses? Do you want more walk-ups or less walk-ups? Do you want more of this type of courtyard housing, or the, what we call the Texas donut on the bottom right, which is a building surrounded by, a parking deck surrounded by buildings all around? Thinking about building types starts to get you to think about the form and the character of the building. And open space, that's a third element, and it's treated the same way as well. So right now, your existing code basically says that developments that occupy an entire city block have to provide courtyard or plazas accessible to adjacent public open space, but it doesn't necessarily attach standards to that. So we began to, we wanted to do that. And so we took one example and said, you know, and this is not uncommon in cities, to provide open spaces, often leftover space, it's undefined, it faces the back of buildings, there are no trees, there's no standards for benches or lighting or anything. And so we wanted to say, no, well, we should have, the same way we have standards for buildings, we should have standards for open space. Let's define the open spaces that exist. A park is different to a playground, is different to a plaza, is different to a courtyard, is different to a four-court, and they all have standards attached to them. So let's write those standards. First, describe what they are, suggest where they need to be, and this could be, you know, developments around could contribute to one kind of open space, or you could decide, instead of one big one, you want two small ones or three small ones. That's to be determined. Or you could remove it altogether and say, let every property owner provide the open space where they feel it's needed. There are many different ways in which to do this. Right now, your regulating plan suggests one mandatory open space type and then suggested open space types. And so what we've done is we've written standards for them. Define the six different types that you have, said what transect zones they should be adjacent to, what are the minimum standards attached to them in terms of their size and their dimensions and their landscaping? And so here's an example of what you could encourage property owners when they come forth with a proposal, is to say, show us, where are your shade trees? Where are the benches? Is it well-lit? Is it accessible from the street? Is it fronted by streets? It's important that public open space be fronted by streets, so that it feel like a public space as opposed to feeling like a private space, and what are the sizes of it? The next one is streets, of course, and streets is a big one, and there are a lot of goals attached to the streets. We heard about people wanting to provide safe and walkable and bikeable streets, to support the connection and pedestrian experiences, and there's a lot of children in this area, and they need to be able to feel that they can walk safely and cross the street safely. To hide the parking, hiding parking achieves a lot of things in the back of buildings, least of which is not having these interrupted curb cuts all the time that prevent the kids from walking and feeling safe from when they're walking. Having wide sidewalks and street trees and making the streets contextual. And of course, you have your Charlottesville streets that work, which we looked at and made sure that the code was completely calibrated to it, because you have recognized in your city that you need to make your streets more contextual. And there's a whole manual that is actually very nice, that we wanted to make sure was well-calibrated to your code. So we talk about streets as being either barriers or seams. Are they places where people want to, where you're just moving cars from point A to point B, and every street needs them, every city needs them? Or is it a place where people can gather and linger? And in the SIA, you want it to be a place where people can gather and linger. The streets on the edge can be what moves cars, but there's no reason why all the streets within the SIA can't be made pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly. And so too often, we see buildings that turn their back to the street, and you have it in Charlottesville, in your downtown, right adjacent to the site. Buildings that basically turn their back to the streets, because the streets are inhospitable. Because you've now written your street guide that mandates the street be more pedestrian and bike-friendly, it'll encourage buildings to behave and to be more civilized vis-à-vis the streets as well. So you want buildings to be turned outwards, not inwards. You want wide sidewalks, you want trees planted in ways that don't interfere with pedestrian access. You obviously want bikes, places for people to park their bikes, and you want street furnishings, and you want storefronts with standards and all of that. And that has been written into your code. And so we took this, we took your document that was given to us, we looked at it, and we made sure that everything we've written is in line with your, with the street types. And this is just another way of saying, should a street be a link or should it be a place? We focused on the streets that want to be a place, and that has to do with, how wide should the travel lanes be? How wide should the sidewalks be? Should there be parking along the edges and that sort of stuff? And then we've driven, we've drawn up what those street sections should look like, and ensure that they match the street sections you have in your code. And so then we did, the street types are aligned to this, they've been placed into your regulating plan. So as I mentioned before, there are few places where we say streets have to connect, so they have to connect to, is that Eighth Street? I forget. Sixth Street? No, this one, right there. What's that one? Sorry. I forget the name of it. Fourth Street, sorry. Fourth Street has to connect, of course. Sorry. Down, on the bottom, it has to connect. This one, the one with the red square around the, the red line around the square has to connect, but within the site after that, it should be more open to interpretation. And last but not least, the density and affordable housing. So we spent a lot of time digging through your affordable housing to really try and understand it. So the first one was, okay, what does the city currently have? What are your housing affordable options, affordable housing options? You're allowed by right 43 dwelling units an acre. Your SUP or your special use permit allows you to go to 240 units an acre. So that's a 560% increase in capacity by only providing 5% more for affordable housing. It's a fee in lieu of, there's a fee in lieu of option, meaning that you can pay for that off-site, and of course, it's tied to housing, but it's tied to 80% of AMI, and we were told by the community, that's just not good enough. You need to go at a lower AMI than that. We don't think it's very desirable for developers, and not a lot of them are moving forward with proposals this way. It doesn't provide you with enough affordable housing, and the AMI target is too high, so we wanted to find ways in which to lower it. Then we looked at your state allowances, and your state allowances are even weirder. And it's understandable why nobody's taking advantage of it, because it also doesn't make sense. It gives up to 30% a maximum increase, up to 17, from 17 to 30%, and it's tied to the amount of housing that you provide. So if you provide this much, if you're providing, your density bonus is attached to the bonus you get, so if you provide less affordable housing, if you want more height, you need to provide more affordable housing, but it's capped at 17%. And nobody's taking advantage of it. We think the math doesn't work, as we ran through a bunch of numbers. Obviously, the math doesn't work, so you're not getting any affordable housing out of that. And it's strictly tied to density. So then we came up, we came up with another option that said, what if you were to remove density from the equation in the state? If you remove density, you don't have to cap it at 30% anymore, and it could be 60% affordable, or 80% affordable, or whatever the market will bear. Now, it means the community has to get comfortable with the idea that in three stories, you may be able to fit more than 43 units an acre, depending on how big the buildings are. So if people are willing to accept that at three or four stories, whatever the by-right density is, in those conditions, you will exceed the by-right zoning, all of a sudden now, by giving the bonus heights, you can provide much more than what the state caps you at if you exclude density and you only figure, and you only work on the issue of height. And you say, we're going to give you two extra stories, or three extra stories, or four extra stories, without talking about density, the possibilities become much more attractive, we think. And as I mentioned, in an effort to be completely transparent, it is giving an increase of by-right density, not necessarily. Some people will build three stories and build under 43 units an acre. Some may build greater than 43 units an acre, but frankly, because you have such an affordability problem, that would mean smaller units, which would be a smaller cost. So there's a benefit to that as well. And of course, there are other elements that the code addresses, which is uses and frontages and parking, but we won't get into it now, we may get into it at the open house. But that's the general framework, and that's the general, those are the main five topics that we went out to the community to try and explain to folks. Yes, it's very important to want affordable housing, and you're on your way there by having put a stop to this code, by having said, let's understand what our housing needs or assessment are before we move forward with it. Now, we were asked to run a potential development, and I see the developer of X is here, Ludwig, and he has not seen this, he doesn't know, and I said to him, you're lucky that we did numbers on your property, you know, we did designs for free. So to give you an idea, because the city wanted to know, this is the largest property in the area, what can be, what can this site yield in terms of affordable housing? To really try and understand what we are, what we are faced with. Because during our community meetings, we were hearing, provide 800 affordable housing units, provide 600 affordable housing units, provide 300 affordable housing units, but if it's not rooted in the reality of what the market will bear, it's not helpful to anyone. We want as many affordable units as the market can bear, but the developers are willing to build, of course.
So before you do that, could you back up a little bit and just talk about, this is T6, right?
No, this is T4, 5, and 6. This is for the entire SIA.
So the nine stories is in which part?
So the nine stories is in the, on the X property, which is where the open space is. What we're saying is, where you have to provide open space is where the greatest heights make sense.
So the benefit, the height, the open space, providing the open space gives, you all had the discussion that that would give the ability to build the nine stories.
Only if you provide affordable housing. It's either four stories by right and five of additional, for affordable, or it's six by right and three of affordable. So it's saying you get greater height if you're next to an open space, but it doesn't mean you can, you're getting the extra height for nothing. You're getting the extra height to provide affordable housing, but we don't think you should allow nine stories everywhere. But nine stories is technically allowed everywhere in your SIA. And if you don't control where it goes, you'll get towers that pop up, you know, nine stories here, nine stories there, nine stories here.
Okay.
That's what we were trying to, so we're trying to say, where should, where does it make sense to have the nine stories? And where does it make sense not to have the nine stories, but to have a six-story limit, which is where the majority of the area, of the area we think should be. So we ran a variety of scenarios. And the first scenario was, what if there's a maximum build-out? What if the market was such that everything could be structured parking? What would that look like? The second scenario is, there's a medium build-out, which is some structured parking, but also some surface parking, because we see both in and around your downtown. The third scenario was, what if you did parking just under the building and some surface parking? And the fourth scenario is the lowest one, which is, what if you just went to surface parking everywhere? Because the property owner can do any of these four. They're all currently allowed under the code. So what makes sense, and how many affordable housing units could you get out of these scenarios? So here's the first scenario, and it's very generic, but it basically uses the regulating plan to say, you could divide the blocks this way. The red buildings you see, or the dark orange, are mixed-use buildings with retail on the ground floor, and the retail is essentially around this open space. The orange buildings are multifamily buildings, and the heights have been, are calibrated or tailored to what the code permits. Under this scenario, and the gray bars you see are parkings embedded within the blocks, it's all structured parking, so it's the most expensive, of course, to do, but it would get you 2,093 units, and the overall density is 91 units an acre. And it's basically all multifamily buildings. It doesn't give you townhouses, doesn't give you anything but multifamily. The second scenario says, well, let's do a little, a mix of both. Let's have predominantly multifamily, but let's also have some single family. So you've got to see the yellow and the pink, those are townhouses and two-over-twos, which we know Friendship Court, for example, is putting in their site, and basically saying the greatest height again around the open space. This gets you 1,234 units, so significantly less than the other one, but as you can see, it's many less parking decks than the previous one. The third option says, what if we had no structured parking, but you just park under the building? And when you park just under a building footprint, you can get three and a half stories. We know that, we've done this calculation a thousand times, it's easy to do. You don't have to go beyond the boundaries.
That's not underground parking, that's...[1752.86]
It's half a level down, half a level up. Yes, it's, it's, it's true. Just under the building. It's not under the entire thing. But it's still semi-bury. And as you can see, predominantly surface parking lots. So again, it's multifamily buildings, but at a much lower height. And this one gets you a little over a thousand dwelling units. And now you're getting to forty-seven dwelling units an acre. So kind of what you allow by, under your code right now. And then the low-building scenario says absolutely no either half-bury, non-bury, structured parking. You will get seven-hundred-and-fifty-three dwellings here and thirty-three dwelling units an acre. And this one still only gets you twenty-five percent single family. And it's mostly multifamily, which is not unreasonable given its location here. And so then we gave these, these four scenarios to Anita, so that she could run her numbers and say, okay, based on this, what are the affordable housing units we can get at the various AMIs? And what we know can work within the city? And on that note, I'll turn it over to Anita.
So, and before you start, I just want to see.
Marta, you may need to talk.
I think this one's on. So this is complicated stuff. And we wanted to give you as much specific information as we could. So we, we developed some options and scenarios. They're all kind of prototypes. But I wanted to see, before we move on to looking at the number of affordable units that would be generated under each scenario, I wanted to see if there were any questions about what we've gone through so far.
I have a question with the open space surrounded by the nine-story buildings. Did, is there like a buy-right option there that they could still do the three by right and not build the open space and not build any affordable units? And it kind of seems like the open space is big enough that their, the floor area to get out of that would be more.
Well, right now, we put, the way the regulating plan is designed, there's a mandatory open space there. So you can't not provide an open space. Does it have to be as big as that one? No. But it can be, you'd have to pick out of the, if you remember the drawings we showed, there's, there's five or six different open space types. Obviously, it wouldn't be a passage between buildings. It'd have to be either green or plaza or square, right? And there are minimum standards for that. So at a minimum, but have, you, you need an open space there. It can't all be built with no open space.
So currently, your code would allow, if it were mixed-use, the code would allow nine stories. It would require some percentage of open space. But where or how, or whether it's aggregated or scattered around, is not specified. So that's what you've got now. With this form, with this zone, zoning ordinance, with this suggestion, it would have, the, the code would specify more or less what the dimensions were and what the quality, what, what needed to be in the open space. It's public open space. It's not exclusively for just the people who live around it. And because higher, higher buildings are more compatible when you, or sort of fit into the landscape better when you have open spaces next to them. That's why we're suggesting, because when they're, when you've got towers next to towers, next to towers, it's just much more overpowering. So that's why we're suggesting that the, the highest buildings, the tallest buildings, which are four stories, four or five stories by right, and then if you put in affordable housing units, you get, you can go up to nine, which is again, what we're suggesting for consideration. It is only adjacent to the open space. Does that help? Does that answer your question?
I think so. Are, are we allowed to, to take a parcel and say it has to be open space? Or are you saying it's only if they develop?
Well, right now, your code requires that if you develop a whole block, you have to provide some kind of open space. Right? So this is basically saying, we're just, we're, we're deciding where that open space needs to be. And now, everybody who's developing within the SIA should either, should contribute towards that, the, that open space.
Okay, I think I get it. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes. So you've pointed out that our existing zoning actually provides incentives to only build commercial, or to be biased towards building commercial space. What about this is going to bias developers to build residential units? Is there anything that's?
That's a good question, because, well, the idea is, well, you've taken away the, the incentive to build commercial. So we have heard that you are saturated, your office market is more saturated.
Okay, so it's the market.
It's market-driven more than anything else.
So it, it levels the playing field so that the market is more, is more determinate.
And it'll, but it'll also make housing more affordable by default, right? And it'll also encourage smaller housing units, because your density isn't right-sized to the size of your buildings. So if you remove density as, as that equation, and you say three stories by right irrespective of density, some will do big units, but some will do smaller units. And if, but just by doing smaller units, you'll have, it'll, those units will be slightly more affordable.
I have five questions, but I'll break them up so other people can jump in. I don't want to dominate. First up, I see that the law may be a limitation. Oh, no. What, what exactly is allowed and what is not? Can you clarify that, please?
I don't know about limitations. We need to work around it. We need to find a way, which is what we're trying to do, to use height as a measure rather than number of units. Because the state law restricts the number of units that you can give bonuses for, but it does not restrict the height.
Correct. And the attorneys seem to think that that, so far, it's okay.
T-six zone, it looks skinny to me compared with the public space provided. Why so skinny?
Well, it's the, it's one building depth. It, it looks small on the signs, but I think it's a hundred-and-twenty feet or a hundred feet here. It could be made wider. It's a good point. And we just thought, just sort of one, one depth. Now, if people wanted to do courtyard buildings, why not? So there may be room to have it a little wider.
I think one of the scenarios actually had a T-six courtyard building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so if the ability to provide open space is used as an incentive, what's the conversation around ensuring that that space is open, truly open to the surrounding community and not limited to the, you know, the property that's developed?
So, so open space feels, so first, it would be public by virtue of the fact that it's surrounded by four public streets. It's not attached to, it's not attached to a block. It can't be gated off in any way. So when you see open space, the way it's being drawn this way with streets all around it, it's a public open space. Right? At least in the way this, the.
I mean, I hear you, it is not sitting well, but I hear what you're saying.
I, I know, we've heard people say that they, that some, it takes more than that to make people feel comfortable. But that's beyond zoning. I wouldn't want to tell you that we, that, that your zoning code can resolve it. But it is what will make the space comfortable for residents to be in. A lot of that has to do with what, what, what is, what are the uses that are around the square? How will people feel being there? Will there be a playground attached to it? All it takes is putting a small playground to automatically be a draw for families. You know, I know as a mother of a small child, you know, she gravitates to wherever playgrounds are. It doesn't matter what they look like. So there are ways in which you can make the space attractive for certain people. And in fact, there are, I mean, this is a whole other conversation. But if you, if you know of, there's a, there's a Danish guy called Jan Gel, who writes about, and there are many other people, who writes about, who has studied human behavior in open spaces. And they know what it takes to make people feel comfortable in those spaces. They now know, because by virtue of where, how people take pictures in spaces, and because everybody's photos are geotagged, you can study the demographics of the people who come here and understand how they use spaces and whether they prefer benches on the outside of a space or whether they prefer benches on the inside of a space. So just human nature by in and of itself, and how that park is designed, how you lay out furniture, can make it more conducive or less conducive to people wanting to interact with it. And of course, the kinds of uses you allow within it as well. But the most important thing to make it feel public is to have it be, have streets on all sides.
So is that property donated to the city? And is this something the city maintains? I mean, what is the?
That's another good question. You know, it depends. It can be privately, it can be an agreement you come, you come to with the, with the developer. Or it can be a land that's deeded over to you. You'll have to figure that out.
Yeah, again, that's an, that's an administrative conversation as opposed to a zoning conversation.
What we, what we try to do here is to say, because you can, you can do three or nine stories with your SAP, SUP, how can you rationalize that a little more to give a little greater level of predictability? And it, and, and, and how can you rationalize where open space needs to be as well? And the regulating plan sort of designed itself. You know, it's the logical place to put it. It's a lot, even though your SIA master plan looks entirely different to this, the bones are the same, right? So it, the, the open space is logical in this location. You're lucky enough that you have a property owner who can afford to do that. I mean, he's got enough land that he can do it. Whether he wants to or not is a different story. But he has indicated a willingness to do this if the, if there is a, if there is a predictable framework laid out. He's indicated that, I'm putting words in his mouth, but he's indicated a willingness to build affordable housing if there's a predictable process through here, you know? And he's gone off and built it in Richmond while waiting for us to resolve it here. So we want to encourage him to build here. You should want to encourage him to build here.
So kind of a two-part follow-up to that. So if it would remain privately owned, I get that we can make them, or prevent them from putting up fences and make them have to make it feel like a public space. But they could still have security guards chasing people off? And then if it were to be publicly deeded, would we have to compensate them for that with money? Or could that be part of the?
That can be part of your, that's, that's also beyond zoning, but part of your negotiation. But it's not uncommon for cities to, to enter into an agreement and to write, to write restrictions. Like you cannot, you, you, you will not fence this park, you know? Now, Paris, for example, has beautiful fences, but they're transparent and they're low and all of that. So you can, if, for, for whatever reason, depending on the uses you have in there. A portion of it, let's say, is a dog park. You want it fenced, as an, as an example. So depending on the uses that go in there, you could put conditions that you, that are there as part of the open space for the private developer. Or your park's an open space if they're willing to deed it over. That's why we said nine stories to go taller. If they're willing to deed over a space to the city and the city's willing to maintain it, well, then maybe it's a way to, to give them additional, that, that's one of the reasons why there's an additional height by right there that isn't afforded everywhere else. At least that was the logic behind it.
I have a question about bonus heights. I read a, a bonus height study, very well-written. I recommend reading it. It talked about locations where bonus heights make sense. And my impression was that really around UVA, where land values are obscenely high, is where that makes sense. This is a little bit far from UVA. Where, where's the disconnect, please?
Well, I think Anita's going to address that in her presentation.
Yeah, that's part of Anita's presentation. It's a good question.
Yeah, it is a good question. Are there any other questions about the code and the other elements? Or should we move forward? And we can then take questions once Anita's spoken.
Yeah, we're not going to shut this off. We just, I, like I said, this is complicated. So I wanted, if you had any pressing questions, I wanted to be sure and give you a chance to get some clarity. Thank you.
So as Marta and Marina talked, the timing of the charrette and the nature of the SIA made affordable housing a critical element to the plan and to the form-based code. So I was asked to prepare a housing needs assessment for the city that was completed in early 2018. So these numbers are from 2017. So just to keep that in mind. So just to give you some, some of the framework, the touchpoints, I think Marina mentioned a couple of times, AMI, which is the area median income. In 2017, that was seventy-six-thousand-six-hundred. And when we talk about different income levels, we use a percentage of AMI as, as a way to refer to that. And it is adjusted by household size, because obviously the, your money goes further when you have fewer people. So thirty percent of AMI for a family of two would be under eighteen thousand, just under eighteen thousand dollars for a family of four, twenty-four-thousand-six-hundred. That, thirty percent is an important break, because that's typically HUD standards for Section Eight vouchers, Housing Choice vouchers, or for public housing. Fifty percent of AMI goes up accordingly. So thirty thousand for a two-person household, thirty-eight thousand for a four-person. Eighty percent is sort of the highest, higher end of low income. And that for a two-person household would be forty-nine thousand, or sixty-one-thousand-three-hundred for a family of four. So when we talk about affordable rents, what we, the standard that's typically applied is that you should spend no more than thirty percent of your income for rent, including utilities. And so when we take those incomes from the previous slide and we say, what's thirty percent of their income? And what's the maximum rent that they could afford? They're relatively low. So if you're at thirty percent of AMI, you know, you're down in the four to six hundred dollars a month that you could afford. At fifty percent, you're at seven-sixty-five to nine-sixty. And at eighty percent of AMI, twelve-hundred to fifteen-hundred, which gets to be closer to the market. So what we found in looking at the inventory of affordable, of all housing, rental housing in the city, looking largely at the thirteen major apartment complexes in and around the city, these were the rents, rent ranges we found based on bedroom size. And you'll see, you know, fairly high across the board. And I just mentioned, there are very few three- and four-bedroom units. The occupancy levels are, at, in 2016, were almost complete total occupancy at ninety-nine-point-five percent. We added some, three-hundred-and-ninety-two units in 2017. And that brought the occupancy rate to something more normal, which is about ninety-five percent. That gives you time to clean and, between tenants, clean and repaint and all. But that, traditionally, that, the occupancy's been very high. And that's allowed the landlords to raise rents very quickly. So the average rent in those complexes was thirteen-hundred-eighty-four dollars per month. For a family, a single-earner family working at minimum wage, that's a hundred-and-forty-seven hours a week you would have to work in order to be able to afford that average rent. There are no available units affordable to households at or below sixty percent of AMI. So they just don't exist in any of those complexes. And we went online and looked at Craigslist and Zillow and others. And other than the public housing and some subsidized, or some assisted housing, we didn't find any units in the private market that were affordable at sixty percent of AMI. And when we were looking for that four-person family at fifty percent of AMI, they were at nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars a month. We only found eleven units citywide that were available at under nine-hundred dollars a month. So it really is a very tight market. And that's resulted in rapid rent increases. So that from 2012 to 2017, the average rent went up eighteen percent. And in the 2017 alone, the average rent went up nine percent. So we're watching incomes improve very slowly. No one can afford a nine percent jump in, in rent. The assisted housing inventory is relatively limited. The Redevelopment and Housing Authority has three-hundred-and-seventy-six units. Two-hundred-and-eighty-nine of those were built before 1980 and are showing their age. Among their residents, sixty-two percent have incomes below ten thousand dollars. So that's less than twenty percent of AMI. So they're not even making it to thirty percent. And at the time, we did the study, there were sixteen-hundred-and-fifty-one people, households on the waiting list. And that represented essentially an eight-year wait. So that's a very long time when you're being, your budget is being stretched as hard as it is. Low-income housing tax credits are the major source of federal funding now for affordable housing. And we have seven-hundred-and-twenty affordable units built with Lytech funding in and near Charlottesville. Those are typically aimed to serve households with incomes between fifty and sixty percent of AMI, those affordable units. And then the Housing Choice vouchers, seven-hundred vouchers. And those are available to families with less than thirty percent of AMI, to seniors and to the disabled. The, one of the things we found was that they are hard to use within the city. The fair market rents are set based on rents in the region. And so the fact that rents are higher in the city meant that they were beyond the ability of the voucher to pay for them. So people are being forced to live out, if they're lucky enough to get the voucher, then they are forced to live outside the city in many cases to, in order to find a unit that's appropriate to their needs and still affordable with their voucher. So for those who stay in the city, many of them are going into these Lytech buildings, the ones we had, that had units available at fifty percent or sixty percent of AMI. That gets to rents that are about affordable relative to fair market rents that the voucher would support. So on the, as we looked at what are the housing needs, the major indicator we use to say what is a need, a housing affordability problem, is the percentage of your income that you're spending for housing. So as I mentioned, the HUD standard is 30% of your income for housing. But in fact, the number of households at 50%, more than half of their income is going for housing. And that's a hardcore part of the need here in the city. So as we look here, particularly in the people, households with incomes below 30% of AMI are particularly concentrated in that category of severely cost-burdened, spending more than half of their income. And with a lesser number at 50, but still significant share of those people at 50% of AMI, and then a much smaller share at 80% of AMI because there are rents that are within their means available in the market. And then the second set of columns are looking at the people who are spending between 30% and 50% of their income on housing. So to put that into numbers, for 20, at 2017, we had 1,750 severely cost-burdened households, plus another 940 who were spending 30% to 50% of their income for housing. We define that as the hardcore need. In addition, we had the public housing and Section 8 project at Friendship Court, of units that need to be replaced. They're all functionally obsolescent and getting to the point where it's costs more to maintain and improve, or renovate than it would to build new. And then in the, on the homeless side, we have a number of families that are doubled up and on the verge of homelessness. They're sleeping on friends' couches, or they're moved back home with mother or with grandmother. And those also include a number of people who have a need for permanent supportive housing with services that come along with the housing and not just roof over their heads. So that, that's 3,300 units currently, as of 2017, that the community needs. And I should just correct them. It's a little bit of a misnomer because it's not necessarily that we need to build 3,300 new units. I mean, people are housed, they're just spending too much. So rental vouchers, such as the city has undertaken, are very, is a very appropriate approach to meeting those needs as opposed to just pure, purely new construction. But by 2040, we expect that that need is going to grow to 4,000 households with housing needs. And that's assuming that we've replaced the public housing, Section 8, by then. And one would hope we'd get a better handle on homelessness as well, though it's not boding well. So then, because that was a key part of the Form-Based Code and the ability to require develop, private developers to build more, to build affordable units in exchange for addition, the ability to build more, we focused on the financial aspects of what does it mean? What are those trade-offs? So the idea is that by allowing the developer to build more units, more space on the same piece of land means the land cost portion of that prop, of that unit is much smaller and therefore they can rent it at a lower rent. Or they can take that savings and apply it to, to a number of affordable units within their building. So we, what we do then is to say, "Under what circumstances do the numbers work so that you've created enough value to support the cost of those affordable units?" And so it's a function of height, which affects the construction costs. So wood frame construction, which can go up to five, typically about five stories, is much less expensive than concrete and steel, which is what you need when you get to six and 10 stories. And so that becomes an issue. If the bonus we give you makes your whole building cost more per square foot, we may not have done you a favor in terms of creating new value. The other aspect of that is this cost of parking. Because a surface parking lot might cost about $5,000. But then the, if we build the above-ground structure that Marina showed, having housing circle it, those are about $20,000 a unit, and if we, I mean, a space. And if we ask for underground parking, it's about $32,000, $35,000 in space. So once you add $35,000 to the cost of the unit, or worse, you have more than one space per unit, it becomes a very significant part of the cost of building that unit. So we ran a series of financial pro formas to estimate the value that was created and to then translate that into what could be supported in the way of affordable units. And we did that at a number of sites, including near, nearer to UVA, and then the SIA. So what we found is that Charlottesville has an unfortunate situation of having rents and land and building costs that are too high for mid-rise housing. That the rents just don't support, the rents plus, don't support the cost of the land and moving to concrete instead of wood construction. So there are some exceptions that I'll mention in a moment. But most of the sites that we looked at could support only wood frame construction, so three to four stories, or possibly five stories with surface parking, was in most of the places. In downtown, we could, it was only in downtown that we could support the five stories with structured parking. And so the bonus heights, when you say, "I'm going to let you go from five stories to six stories", that doesn't help you. When you go from five stories to six, you've just massively increased your construction costs per square foot. And we haven't created enough value to offset that. So the exceptions I mentioned, the student housing near UVA where you're renting by the bed, and they're paying fairly high rents as a result. When you're in the luxury market for rental housing, there's one, some element of the market that can support higher rents. And then the condominiums are much, work much better in terms of the numbers supporting the building of new, new units. But the, the problem with condominiums is that they come with condominium fees that can run $300, $400 a month. And when you compare that to the rents that people can pay, they become just an incredible burden. And it means that you, you can't do that. One of the things we discovered as well is that the, at 30% of AMI, the rents that people can pay at 30% of their income don't even cover operating costs. And so you're, you just dig yourself in a hole. And we have to find other ways to try to meet that need. So is, what the code, or our analysis suggested, is that at the different levels of height, really the major, most buildings would be in the T4 and the T5, where we'd be probably three to five stories. And that there, we could afford, we, in exchange for a bonus height above three stories, we could ask for 10% of the additional units made possible by that increase in height to be affordable to people at 50% of AMI. Or we could ask for 15% of the units to be affordable at 60% of AMI. Or if we were to go to the 80% of AMI and we're dealing with a higher level workforce housing, we could ask for 20 units, or 20% of the new units above a three-story base. And what that translates into is not very many units. This is not going to be our magic bullet. This is not going to solve all of the affordable housing problems in the city or even in the SIA. Because the, the bonus above three stories, when you go to four stories, you lose, you have to have more surface parking and you, or you move to structured parking and you lose either, you don't add enough units to make a difference. And so even with the 2,000 units that Marina showed you in the highest-density development, the, depending on the size of the, or the AMI that you're trying to serve, at 80% of AMI, that full 2,000 units could include 190 affordable units. If you're trying to serve the 60% of AMI community, that would support 147 units. And at 50% of AMI, it'd be just under 100, so 98 units. So out of that total redevelopment, it's, we're still far short of the 3, 6, 500, 800 that the community was looking for. When we step back and we're doing the lower densities, that mid-level and, and below that, the numbers are about half of what they would be at the maximum. And then at the mid-level two, we would be at 55 units at 80% of AMI, 42 units at 50, or 60%, and 29 units at 50% of AMI. And that's, and at the low, it's pretty limited because much of what would be developed would be by right with no density bonus, with no height bonuses to, to apply. So what we've been saying all along is that bonus density, bonus height is one tool, but it's not the only tool. And you need a affordable housing strategy to solve those problems in a holistic way, using a whole set of tools and not just this one alone.
Excuse me, Anita?
Yes.
But again, that, right now, the current zoning does not build any affordability units on site at all.
Would not build any. That's right, absolutely.
So I think it's just kind of, to go from zero to 98 for 50% AMI in one of the build-out scenarios is, is not something to say is not valuable.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
And then you're, and you're gonna be talking about your...
And then there's some other options, right.
Synthetic.
And that's in the next year or in the next 10 to 20 years?
That's a build-out.
And when is that?
Probably 20 years.
Thank you.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So some of the alternatives, the way your special use permit is set now, you are allowed to buy out of that at a, I think it's like two, a little over $2 per square foot of total building. And we could continue to use a special use permit. And in that situation, the, these are units based at 60% of AMI. So you would get a, you would get less than you would get under the Form-Based Code with bonus height. So it would be 126 units under the maximum development, where you could use that as a, to fund construction of new units. At the mid-level, it'd be 78 units. At the mid-two, it'd be 62 units. So that's, that's the way your code would work now. And you could reserve special use permits for some portion of the development. I think the more interesting, oops, we lost something. Okay, the most interesting, there we go, approach is to look at tax increment financing. In your case, it would have to be a synthetic tax increment financing. So I'll explain what that might be and how you would use that. Essentially, what tax increment financing does is it says that if this development would not have occurred or not have occurred at this level without the tax increment financing, without the support, then that's money that's coming new to the city. And what we say is we will reserve, we will freeze the tax base at the current assessments. And that the additional assessments created by the redevelopment, by the higher level of development, the taxes generated by that incremental value, we're going to take and use for other purposes. So the way it works is that, let's see, the, this is the base revenue that the city would be receiving already. Then if we used it for debt service, then those dollars would go to debt service for as long as the bonds were out, so in the light blue. And those that were not committed would go back to the city. And then when you had done, sold or paid off your debt, then all of the revenues would come to the city. In this situation, the scenario we've drawn, devised here, what we've said is that tax increment financing, we would approximate that by making a commitment as council to take the dollars that you receive, the incremental dollars created by the redevelopment, and take one quarter of those dollars on a, into the future. So not with bonds necessarily, but to use it as vouchers. And so if we were to take a quarter of the taxes that would be generated under these alternative scenarios and put those to vouchers for people at 30% of AMI, so the population we're having the most trouble serving under the maximum build-out, that would be 99 vouchers that we could support every year for very low, extremely low-income families.
So where would, did you all discuss where they would live? Because you mentioned earlier that they are having to move outside the city.
Well, I think what, if it's a city-run voucher, then you have the discretion to make the fair market rent appropriate to the city of Charlottesville. And in fact, HUD is moving that in that direction because they're recognizing that people can't live in the center cities typically with fair market rents that are set based on this, largely based on suburban rents. And so now they're saying, they're starting to allow communities to peg their fair market rent based on zip code level rents instead of the regional rents. So if those, in these cases, you would, it might cost you more per voucher as the supplement. But you would have pretty much total discretion to decide what that maximum rent would be. And you could set it to the market so that they could afford units within the city.
And then what's the timeframe for when the funds would be available to go towards the vouchers versus...
Well, the, with the tax increment financing, it grows as the development proceeds. So it might take you 20 years to get to 99 vouchers. But it, you would start to see them, you know, pretty quickly with the first, first round of development. And there are, you know, you could make other arrangements. You might say, you know, for the first 10 years, we're gonna take 50% of the tax increment. And then in the later years, we'll, we'll take less of the increment and put... So it's really, it's a function of your budgeting issues. There are always costs associated with new development, so you, with new residential development. So you probably wouldn't want to take 100% of the increment. But you might adjust that over time to address that, the question of how long it might wait. You might have to wait, yeah.
And I just wanted to be clear in my head, too, that you based it on the geographic area that is pretty much just the X property?
Yes.
So that's not even the entire Phase 1 of the SIA?
That's right, yeah. It's based on that 2,000 units from the largest development, yeah.
And then I wanted to make sure I understood this, so that when you say that the height bonus... the height bonus at the maximum build-out at a sixty percent AMI can give you one hundred and forty-seven units, am I right in thinking that if you had the thirty percent voucher system based on a synthetic TIF, that you could do one forty-seven plus ninety-nine?
Yes. Right. Yeah.
So that-
So there's nothing inherent in giving the height bonuses that inhibits your ability to do tax increment really in any way?
So you could increase the number of affordable units in this area-
Right. Yeah.
That is really only twenty acres right now?
Sixteen. Yeah.
But I think we have to tell the entire story about that because you're still talking about a couple decades before there is significant benefits. And you, there's an increase in the number of housing that will be needed by that time.
Yes.
And so this is great, but we need to make sure that we're, when we're talking about the benefits and who receives bonuses and where the T-four, T-six, and five are located, that you are telling the story of when there would be any significant benefit to.
And as I mentioned, you know, this is, is one, or these are a couple of tools out of a whole range of tools that would be available to you. And so as you're putting together your strategic plan, you really need to be pulling from all of those. So there are other techniques, some limited federal programs that might be brought into play, some state programs, as well as other approaches.
Anita, I may have a quick question now. To that, these are not capped at five years.
Yes, absolutely.
So all the stuff we're getting now is a five-year thing at eighty percent of AMI.
So the affordable units-
Even though it's taking longer than we're having, these are affordable.
And, and I think it's, it's wholly reasonable to ask for thirty to forty years of affordability on those, on the units. That, as we did modeling, that was our assumption, that it was not this flash-in-the-pan, five-year.
Oh, I've been asking for more than five years and never got that. Yes, I understand that.
But it lays a good, something that's just-
So as you, you know, as you move ahead with the Form-Based Code, parking requirements are always a major factor. And we found quite a lot of impact in downtown, especially when we were building underground parking on a very small lot. When we were able to say happy space per unit instead of a full space per unit, it made a lot of difference in terms of how many affordable units we could ask for and justify with a height bonus. So that's something you should be looking at in great detail to see at what level we, in Washington now, because we have a much more robust transit system and more people can walk, we're seeing downtown and in-town apartment buildings are building point-six spaces per unit. And some of those spaces are going empty because the shift in people's modes of transportation to bikes and, and walking to work and the like. And Uber and Lyft have reduced the need for individual parking spaces in the apartment buildings. So to the extent that you can let the market decide how much apartment, how much parking is required for an apartment building, as opposed to your code saying, you know, a minimum of one space per unit or whatever, that, that would be a really important contribution. And I think what Marina mentioned as well is the predictability and the speed with which a development can be approved, the certainty with which you can approach a development, knowing that if you build to the specifics of the code, the project will be approved. That makes a lot of difference in the developers' weighing of risks and rewards and in the decision where to, where to develop, what to pursue, what project to do next. So that would be useful as well in terms of expanding the whole housing supply. Yeah.
Do you have any idea of what the review turnaround time is, has been for Form-Based Code? Is it, is there anybody that's done any-
I think it depends on the community, but-
Depends on the community. It depends on the code. But we are finding that because most of the concerns that a community has are form in nature as opposed to use, that when you have a code that's explicit about what form is permitted and not permitted and that code represents the preferences of the community, that the process is faster. But I don't have days in my-
And it depends, you know, if you change the legal process to match the fact that you've involved the community from the beginning, incorporated their concerns into the Form-Based Code and enforced them through the Form-Based Code, then you have less need to bring every decision to council and to the planning board, you know. And so that's, that's an advantage. But that doesn't always happen with the adoption of a code, a Form-Based Code. But I think we've seen in some places where it goes to administrative approval and the projects no longer come to, to council, the, you could cut a couple, a year or two off of the approval time, and that's really significant for a developer.
I think we know that your SUP process currently now is very unpredictable. And there are projects that come and take years and then they don't get approved, and that doesn't benefit anyone. It's not to say that you wouldn't want, so you would have all these by right options. And even the bone, the intention is that the bonuses would be, if you meet the standards of the code and everything is, you're not seeking any deviations or variances from it, the six or the nine stories or the four and the five stories or the three and the three would be granted by right. It could be done administratively. It's not to say you couldn't have an, you couldn't still introduce the SUP process for somebody who wants to go above and beyond what's currently required. Like if you're in the zone that's, if you're in T-five, but you want to go to nine stories, put, you could allow them to pursue the SUP process. That would maybe get you slightly more units if people were allowed to, if more of the, if you were to zone more of it, T-six. But they just have to go through a more onerous.
Which slows it down.
Which slows it down. Yeah.
The other thing, just, I wanted to mention to you that Anita mentioned the idea of the cost of parking. And we just finished a project in Honolulu looking at off-street parking. And in Honolulu, they actually trade off parking units for affordable units, for affordable housing. If you build, if you build in certain districts where there's, it's walkable and there's access to transit, not necessarily rail, but some kind of transit, if you build affordable units, the parking requirements, the number of parking units or any at all is waived. And that's as-
For the affordable units.
For the affordable units. And if it's all affordable, then you don't have to bill parking at all. And so that, again, is, is a way to reduce the cost of the unit and have that reduced cost pass through to a, someone who has a limited income. So it's just another tool. And I know that you have an RFP out to do a housing strategy. And I think that's great because these are, you know, these are like the top level. And I think we actually have a list of multiple tools that you can include in that strategy. And these are just some of those ideas that, as you develop your housing strategy, you can look at them. And when you put a package together, I mean, the bad news is, as Anita said, you've got, you've got a huge need. The good news is that you're on a path to have a strategy and you've got a lot of good data to build that strategy on.
Other questions?
Mayor Walker, it's seven forty-five. We only schedule this from six to eight. I feel like that's not enough time for us to, but that is what we scheduled. I did not see on the agenda time for public comment. Is that something?
Yes.
I do have one quick question, if I may. Is this, am I thinking this correctly, that this could also be a template for other areas of the city that we want to intensely develop?
Absolutely. Yes. That often happens in Las Vegas right now, for example. They've developed a citywide set of standards. And they've done codes for one and now two districts within that city. And they're getting ready to start on their third, using a Form-Based.
So for the bonus, the height bonuses, you would need to calibrate those to the neighborhood you're working in. So that if you were near UVA, you might double those, you know, just by virtue of the higher rents.
One thing I would recommend, Kathy, though, is that if you, as you look to other cities, and some cities have done, the cities that haven't adopted Form-Based Codes comprehensively but are choosing to do it sort of bit by bit, pick a framework. This one's transect-based, for example. So if you like the idea of the transect, it would make sense that the rest of the city, like this was calibrated to your DE, your downtown extended zoning. I don't know where else you have your DEs and you have other districts, too. But ideally, everything is structured under the same framework. There are some cities, like Nashville, for example, that have had this tremendous, tremendous, unlocked tremendous potential through their Form-Based Code because they did them neighborhood by neighborhood by neighborhood and they did vision plans before they did the zoning. But every one of them is structured under a different format. And so it's a nightmare administratively to administer. It's much more tailored to each community, but it is very difficult to administer. So that would be my one word portion.
Okay. So we'll open it for public comment.
One quick question.
Okay.
So you have seen success for getting affordable housing with this? Can you give us some of those localities that maybe our staff can take a look at and see?
One of the, one that I would suggest is Columbia Pike in Arlington County. They adopted it, which is, some of you have probably already looked at that. It's not the only one, and we can suggest others. But they really intentionally adopted a Form-Based Code to achieve not only place-making and increased density and more investment and more mixed-use and more walkability, but in their case, they had quite a, a supply of, of market affordable units which were at risk of being torn down and replaced with higher-income units. And the way they structured the code, along with an affordable housing policy, they have been able to retain, not only retain those units, but add to the stock of affordable housing.
The one thing about, the one big difference, though, just as a word of caution, with Columbia Pike is that it was not mandatory, it was optional. But every developer took advantage of it because the base zoning was so low. That's not the case here. Unfortunately, you already, you've already given away, well, you, 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 density, you know, you're capped at a relatively low height, but there is a certain amount of development capacity that's there. Miami is another city that did, that has a public benefit program. And the, and there are multiple options that I know has been successful in the way that affordable housing can be provided. And developers get twice the density they provided onsite, once the density they provided offsite, and then like half the density they provided into a housing, financially into a housing trust fund. So they've calibrated it differently there as well. And there are others.
Yeah, another example is New Rochelle, New York. Now, what they did is they adopted a Form-Based Code for their downtown and then they developed a separate but compatible community benefits agreement so that developers have to do certain things and affordable housing is part of that package that they can do in order to get bonuses. And we can, we can provide staff with other examples.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a mic off to the side here if you would like to speak during public comment.
I have a question. I mean, I understand, you know, this outlines clearly that our existing zoning is broken from the standpoint of producing affordable units. So I see the logic. I see the potential utility. The question I have is presumably, if you're allowing greater heightened density, you're going to be increasing property values and land values for existing property owners, which will bring in increased investment, which will further increase land values and rents. And so the question I have is, is there any way to do a cost-benefit analysis of the number of limited units produced with this height bonus versus the increase in rents that comes from that increase in land value and investment? And particularly, I wonder about if that cost-benefit analysis changes on where you implement this within the city. In other words, if you implement this strategy in an area that has a substantial amount of existing affordable housing and lower land values and rents compared to other areas of the city, will you end up displacing more affordable units because of the increase in land values? Whereas if you did this in an area that had higher land values and existing rents that were already higher, whether you would get more affordable units in that cost-benefit analysis, if that makes sense? And then the second, smaller question is just, in the height bonuses, is there a hard limit to how many years you can make that affordable? Or is that at the discretion of the city? Or do we know, is there a hard limit in state law or something about that that says, you know?
I believe it's strictly a city question. It starts to affect the financeability of the project if it's too long. But we're seeing the movement is, is pretty much toward forty years around the country for that. The value of the bonus depends on the rents that you get from the new units that you build. And so it's very definitely the case that it's more valuable to you to get additional height.
Sorry, to get additional height near UVA than it is to get it in the SIA. And so that we, the cost-benefit is what we were doing in terms of the return reward, or the return to the developer versus the cost of providing the units for a guaranteed period of time. And that, that did not consider whether you were creating value for someone else nearby, you know, by virtue of giving them higher, higher densities. But, but in this case, you have to earn the higher height by making commitments for affordable units. So it shouldn't, it should sort of wash out in the land value. It shouldn't drive higher land values by virtue of, oh, I can now build twice as much as I used to be able to because you have to pay, pay-to-play in that kind of sense. But, and then the tax, the synthetic tax increment financing does take advantage of, if you've created value and raised rents in the units around you by virtue of the better walkability and the open space and just a generally nicer community, that would be captured in, in the synthetic tax increment.
I'm not an economist at all, and so this may sound super simplistic. But when I saw Anita's numbers, the first thing that occurred to me was, you want to allow affordable housing everywhere you can in your city because you have a need, you have, the need you have for it is so much greater than what the SIA or many other places can afford. What Miami did is that they, they, I actually, the amount of money that gets paid is not a flat fee. You know, some, some areas are more valuable than others. And so those areas, some areas pay more into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund than areas that are less valuable. It's calibrated on whatever they pay on a tax basis. But it would be to your benefit, as you look to rewrite your zoning and to address your housing, to find ways in which to, to enable affordable housing everywhere you can, whether it's through bonuses, whether it's through the missing middle housing. So to unlock the potential to provide more units, to allow people to build accessory dwelling units, you need to, you need to activate every tool at your disposal, basically. And so should, as, insofar as the land that's within walking distance of your downtown, it should be as, you should allow it to be as dense as the market can bear. And one thing we didn't look at is, what if you allowed them to go way taller than nine stories? What would that do? You know, does it matter if it's nine stories or twelve stories? We were capped at what the existing bonus is. But you may want to think about, well, what if we raise the limit? What would that do?
I'm just kind of like having a tough time wrapping my head around the statement that's been made that your, your, how, your construction technology changes after five stories. And so you- And so you, you get to be a more expensive building beyond five stories.
Up to a point. And then you, then it. When you get to eight, nine, 10.
So if you get to eight or nine stories, concrete pays for itself because you've got to build so much more on that piece of property.
Okay, so that's why the nine stories.
So it's, the six stories doesn't make, doesn't work for a developer, but a nine-story might.
But, but, one thing, can I say one thing? There's a reason why you don't see a lot of nine-story buildings in the country and that is because it's more productive to go to 12 stories. So one thing you may want to consider here, and I'm not saying it because Ludwig's in the room, but, and with, this is not something we looked at, but what if you went to 12 stories in the SIA? What would that do for your affordable housing? And is there much of a difference between nine and 12? Maybe the community, community will decide, you know what? No, that's just too high. We capped it at nine because that's what you can do right now with the S A, SUP. But that's something you may want to consider if it's, if it's acceptable to the community or not.
All right. Public.
And this is, this is especially relevant here because your land costs are so high. So the more use you can get out of each square foot of land, the more you can tap into that to underwrite affordable housing. To have the, to have it done without public money. Because you have to remember that, that all of this only has to do with how do you get, how do you work with a developer so that he or she provides affordable housing without any public dollars being put in?
Is there anyone else who wish to speak for public comment?
Thank you, it's my first experience with form-based code, so there's a lot of questions I have, but let me just start with some key ones. I was surprised that conditions for the open space aren't actually part of the zoning, the form-based code. And that's partly because the concern about it becoming maybe part of a private sector. Certainly, if you start having restaurants with patios, that becomes now part of the private sector. So I don't know how that's worked out, but something to seriously consider. The transition zone from the residential that moves up the hill as you go east is a concern to me. The three stories in T4, you know, a lot of the houses across the street are, some of them are bungalows, one story. So considering what that really looks like form-wise, you said you were informed by what's happening at Friendship Court, but that's not what's across the street. So I'd like to see that relationship in a section or something like that. Nine stories seems really tall, but it may not be. What building is nine stories? Is Crescent Hall nine or is the Wells Fargo Bank nine?
Wells Fargo.
Crescent Hall is 12, I think.
12. So the relationship of that and the dimensions of the public space seem really important. Again, a section drawing that shows what it feels like to be in that space. If it's a narrow, tight cavern, have you really made a public space that feels welcoming? So that's a really, maybe not a zoning issue, but a design issue. I was surprised, though, not surprised, parking does seem to drive a lot. I see that, I hear what you're saying. Is there also a companion park, citywide parking plan that goes with it? Because what I can imagine, if you build half a space for these units, they're all going to move up to the neighborhoods and we don't have permit parking in the adjacent neighborhoods. So now we get permit, you know, what's the impact citywide? What's the strategy? And in tie into that transportation? I mean, we can't look at this and not talk about transportation and parking. The last one is SIA, I know there's a, I missed the linear park. That was one of the things for me about SIA that was really compelling. And I don't see that in this. This is an example of how form-based would work. Is this actually the template and we've now abandoned some of the design in SIA? So I'm curious to know about that. Thank you.
Lots of questions, I don't know if I'm going to remember all of them. But the, yeah, the first one's for the standards for the open space. There are some, I mean, you, you should look at the draft code because there's, I don't know, there's 70, 80 pages of it and there are, there's a lot of requirements for them. So that's the first thing. And I presume it's, it's available online or it's going to be made available online? The draft? I don't know where Alex is.
He's right there.
Oh, there. Yeah, it's in your packet, great. So that, so it is there.
But is it available to the public yet?
The council agenda.
On the council agenda, yes.
Oh, okay.
As part of the council agenda. The, please stay there because there may be a question, I forgot. The, you asked about the, the size of the open space relative to height. You know, this is very personal. Nine stories or 12 stories, doesn't matter if the, if the, if the street feels wide. You're not going to really notice a difference between nine and 12, honestly. And, and I think at the Sherret, we did sections of the open space. And if you look at the regulating plan, it's a very wide space. Because there is, there is, there is such a thing as two-titre ratio and for, you know, like New York, for example, where there, now you have people who never get sunlight in their streets. But that's not the case here. The, the streets have to be of a certain width and the height's never going to be such that the streets are shaded. And I think I remember, I could be wrong, I have to go back and check, that we had done sections to, to look at the space and how tall the buildings were. We did mass it out. So we could provide a drawing to the city to, to show that to you because if this, it's a very wide open space. There was a linear park, you're right, in the, in the SIA plan. But it went through Friendship Courts in a way that doesn't work for them. So they've abandoned it. And by virtue of how, that we, what does, what the SIA plan, again, this is personal, did is, is really not reconstitute your grid. Charlottesville has a grid and had a grid. And what we tried to do is to reestablish the grid. The idea of the linear park was a nice one philosophically because it was daylighting the idea of a creek that used to exist, right? If you choose to do that, that's, that's possible. It's not, you, you may all decide through this, as you vote this up or down, no, we want to see the idea of a linear park again. I don't think it would impact it whether it's linear or whether it's square. But we thought that the idea of a square surrounded by buildings all around was more in keeping with the character of what you used to have here. And because the creek can't be daylighted anymore, it didn't make sense. And also because it stops at Friendship Court, it doesn't extend anymore the way it did in the SIA. So it would be, the idea of the linear park is kind of lost. But you are going to get linear parks through your streets and your sidewalks that are going to be continuous and are going to provide for a more walkable street.
So the concept of the walkable streets that are wider sidewalks, maybe trees, extends beyond that courtyard? It goes all the way through?
Absolutely, yes. All your streets would be that way.
So the connectivity that the city strives for, for multimodal stuff and pedestrian safety is something that's still, that does make the connection.
Absolutely.
I do think that encouraging us to continue to connect to our parks that are even south of the city is, is a valuable thing just for, we're losing, or understandably, but Friendship Court is a huge outside space and the kids use it a lot. And to give them access to then to other outside recreation areas and parks and trails, I mean, I think there's benefit there.
Yeah, now you had another question about parking.
Yeah.
Which was, we're not proposing 0.6 parking spaces as DC does here because you don't have the robust transit that they have. So your parking requirements are much higher. However, what we have put in place are the idea of shared, shared parking. And I can't remember if you have it in the city already or if we made it a little more aggressive here. But, so for example, commercial and re, and residential, a certain amount of parking can be shared because the commercial's during the day, the residential's at night. So there is a reduction by virtue of taking advantage of shared parking. We're also encouraging parking offsite by saying not every property owner has to provide parking onsite, but if you can provide it within a block or two, that, that enables you, it encourages, for example, the mixed, the missing middle housing because now all of a sudden, a property owner who has a small plot may be able to do a smaller building type and not be constrained by having to fit their parking on their site. All of a sudden, it, it provides you with the opportunity to provide building types that you wouldn't have been able to do otherwise. So there is, there is, in, in the code, an opportunity to also tap into a parking that's a little bit offsite.
One I didn't ask before, but, so how does our community get involved now? Are you presenting in these open houses the draft? Or is it an evolving thing, continues to evolve? And what do we tell our neighborhood associations and things like that?
Okay, that's a very good question. In fact, we wanted to get council planning, planning board's advice on this, which is how best do you think these, these open houses should be held? Should it be presentation? Should it be working session? Maybe staff has an idea on this too. But we were talking about it today, saying what would make, what would make the most sense? Maybe if you're a representative of a neighborhood association, you have an idea of how best to do this. Because we've done presentations, but maybe people want to have an opportunity to just see, ask questions and not have, be lectured at. So you, so you let us, it would be nice before we leave to have an idea of that.
The, the plan was to have an open house, though we're, having somebody with, there to answer questions, standing with the.
Maybe stations.
Yeah.
If you're interested in affordable housing, you stand here. If you're interested in parks and open space and streets, the public realm, you go here. And if you're interested in building types, you sort of go here, kind of thing.
I mean, that's how it was understood.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask a question? My name is Johnny Hall.
Now, just a second, he's about to answer.
Shouldn't we agree that?
Sorry, just one sec, while he answers the question and then?
Yeah, it might be a good idea to have a brief presentation. You know, maybe the first 30 minutes or 40 minutes and then everybody disperses, people who have questions, you know, they will ask the questions. They may have their maps and what have you. That's how we've been doing it lately and it's very productive.
Okay.
I'm Johnny Hall, from Fosbury. Shouldn't we agree that, we shouldn't really say affordable housing? We ought to call it government subsidized housing?
Not, not the housing that we're talking about. That's, that's what I, sorry. What I was saying earlier is the, the affordable units that come from the increased height have no government subsidy.
Well, shouldn't it, I mean, shouldn't we be talking about government subsidy?
I think you should be talking about when you put your housing strategy together, which is what, you have a request for proposals out now. That strategy should take advantage of and include every possible tool that you can use. Whether that includes height bonuses, like we've talked about tonight, whether it includes city-funded vouchers that we discussed briefly here, your special use permits and government subsidies. But those are, but those are all different tools. So yes, government subsidies are a tool, but so are these height bonuses that do not have government subsidies in them.
My question really is kind of directed to the clientele that you're talking about. Many of them can't afford the housing. So that's why it would be called subsidized.
Well, sometimes it is. And sometimes if you can, in some, sometimes this is referred to as developer cross-subsidy. If you add value to the overall development, some of that value the developer forgoes so that people at certain income levels can afford the units for a lesser cost. But the government is not subsidizing them. It's not, it's that they're people who can afford 80% of what the typical rent is, 60%, 40%. And some of those people, perhaps at the higher levels, can afford these units that the developer is providing without any government subsidy. Is that?
So we're talking about taxes then, to make up the difference.
Okay, thank, thank you. We have time for one more question?
Madam Mayor, can I just ask question, one question? In terms of the height bonuses, the resulting affordable housing from that, who dictates the affordability period? Is it the city or the developer? Because right now?
It's the city.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to close the public comment?
I'm just curious of the timeline for these next steps.
If you had it at the beginning, but you had the, remember it.
Yeah.
Not only the open houses, but all this other stuff.
Well, part of it is, is depends on the, well, so let me, let me say it this way. The, we'll have the open houses, the fourth and fifth. And then based on everything we've heard from our discussion with Friendship Courts, from our meetings in the, in the CRHA, from, from here, everything. We're going to put together a long list of potential changes from the draft that we submitted to the city in March, in March, the last draft we submitted. And what we've heard is, we've heard that some of those things, that different stakeholders would like to have changes made to what's currently in the code. So we will submit those to the Department of Neighborhood Services. And that will be done in September, is that correct? And then the city will tell us which of those changes they want us to put in the final draft of the code. And once we have the city's comments, the turnaround from that will be?
Pretty quick.
A couple of weeks?
Probably.
Probably another couple of weeks. So if we give the city the list in September, the city gets back to us within two weeks, by the very end of September, first week in October, with which changes they want in the code. It'll take us two weeks to make changes based on that list. And then we will submit the final draft to the Department of Neighborhood Services. And our work is, and then our, what's left for our role is to provide advice and technical assistance as you go through the review and approval process. And that schedule, I would, I would defer to Alex on.
And if I get a point of clarification, then Alex, my understanding is then that goes to the planning commission. That's how we do zoning changes.
Right.
They, so the planning commission would get the first pass at the, at the, at the code.
That's correct.
Right.
Right. When I say review and approval process, I mean both the planning commission and then the council.
Okay, so, but that would be around October for the planning commission to get, okay.
That's aggressive, maybe November.
Okay.
Because depending on what your notice requirements are, how much, how much, it would be good to get that maybe from Alex.
It depends on when we get it. I'm not sure, planning, I think the planning commission, planning commission meeting in October is second, second Tuesday. So right now, we are not sure when it's going to come in from, from you folks. So I would think, planning commission may have a workshop, you know, later part of October to review it. And then staff will schedule it for November, as planning commission consideration in November. And subsequent after that, it will be city council, you know, in December. So that's the way I'm looking at it. Because remember, the city attorney still needs to review it. You know, so that's, and.
We've done, we've done an initial review and we can meet your timeline for getting you some language changes into certain things in the next few weeks.
That's right, I mean, the city attorney has seen the first draft, has made comments. And we have incorporated those comments into the revised draft.
The revised draft was March of 2018.
Right.
Correct.
All right. I just want to thank you for your very good and thorough work.
Thank you. We'll make them available.
It's all in the council agenda on the city website.
I think there's one question.
One more, we just, I think that, well, this, this revised revision date says 3/28/19, so that is this year. What, based off of what this information says?
We submitted the draft two and three, 2018, and then another one, three, 2019. But there was very little change. I actually don't remember what changed. I'll have to go back and check. It is tracked somewhere, but I don't remember.
I do think that for people to really understand, especially with topography and things, that one of our speakers said, you know, some, some sections through and, and looking at the nine versus 12 stories, is just to see the impact on that surrounding for these open houses on the fourth and fifth.
Yeah, we did, we did look at.
If you've got some of those, maybe that would be good to bring.
We never looked beyond 12, beyond nine, sorry. And I don't know if it, if you think it's worth.
You do have some sections that you've had in the past.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, right.
Sure.
Okay. And just as a last comment, we are happy and intend to do these open houses on the fourth and fifth, is that right? But I would encourage the council and DNS and the planning commission and all of the various interest groups to please, please, please publicize them, let people know what they are, why we're doing them, why it's important that they be there. We have had, we've done several public meetings and we've had mixed results in terms of attendance. So the more you can do to publicize them, the more productive they'll be.
Before council leaves, I'd just like to remind you that the fourth conflicts with the work session that we're having on design standards manual.
We've talked about that, we're going to make some adjustments right now.
It's going to be fixed.
I mean, personally, I would like to go to both just to have some conversations.
No, that, with the public. With the public, so we can really get a feel for the people that do show up.
That, those, that conflict's going to go away.
Okay.
This is going to stay the fourth and fifth.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you very much.